Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the full Board of Alderman meeting for July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Trish, roll call. She's muted. Can you unmute Trish, please? Where the host is? John?
Okay.
Here we go.
All right, Alderman King. Alderman Farrar. Alderman Adamowski. I see he's here. Alderwoman Tar. Alderman Cassetti. Is here. Alderman Janetti. Alderman Knott.
That is here.
Is here. Alderman Hardy. Is here. Alderman Yalman.
He's not here.
Alderman Rivers is here. Alderman Malone. Is not here. President Schuer.
Here.
Alderman Lewinsky. Alderman Duranty. And I see Alderman Janetti is here. So you've got nine present.
Right, John, the Aldermen are muted as well.
Just gonna say that was the best pledge of allegiance yet.
Well, if you remember, we had a, we had a plan to have somebody do it. It wasn't me, but maybe that's the plan. Trick somebody into doing it.
Are any of those phone numbers Alderman?
Um, six, two, eight, one is Alderman King.
So you have ten present.
John, you're the host. The Aldermen are muted or not able to unmute themselves, or are they?
Can you hear me? Yeah. I think I'm on.
He unmuted us.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. President through you. I just want to tell Trish that Tony will be five minutes late, but he'll be here. Tony Mamon.
Okay, thank you for watch for him. Yeah.
Thanks. All right, consideration of previous minutes.
Motion to accept.
Motion from Cassetti.
Second.
Second from Rivers, all favor.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. Before we start, I just want to make sure that we add, or that you guys are conscious that there was one late communication that came in from Emergency Management Director Jared Heon, who should be on tonight as well to answer questions, but we'll take that up under Communications.
You need a motion for that?
Yeah, please.
Motion to accept the communication.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll pick that up after the first communication. That's communication number two. Let's see. Public session. Uh, so we'll open up the public session. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Please make yourself known. Same rules as always. Anyone's welcome to speak. Anyone from the public? I see a hand, Maria El Madrid. Can you unmute yourself? If not, can she be unmuted? By the host. There you go. Please introduce yourself. Name and address for the public record, please, Maria.
Oh, hello. Thank you. I could not do it sooner. Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, yeah, my name is Maria Madrid. I live here in Ansonia. I own a home at eighty-nine Clarkson Street. Um, and I want to start participating in these meetings. I want to become more involved civically. Um, I do have some concerns on that I wanted to express, but I don't know if this is the time. I want to be respectful. You can tell me when to voice a couple of concerns I have about the neighborhood. Just wanting to advocate for, you know, healthy, functional neighborhoods. Um, there's a couple of problems happening here in the Wyclie. Um, you know, I don't know the name, if there's a name to this subdivision, but I work, I live in this, um, you know, Clarkson is off of Wyclie Avenue. I've never been to a meeting like this, so you have to help me and guide me. Is this the time to express concerns, or is it a matter of waiting a little bit for another time?
You can, you can express concerns, and I'll also point out that where you live, you said Clarkson, correct? Eighty-nine Clarkson. That's the fifth ward, so you're, um, you have two Aldermen that represent your area as well, Yalman and Rivers. Yalman is not in attendance, but Alderman Rivers is as well.
Mr. Yalman yesterday, and he was going to communicate my message to Alderman Rivers. So I, I've started that process for sure.
Good. And you're, and you can speak. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sure. Uh, one of my big concerns is I'm a homeowner. I live in a single home here in Ansonia that I bought two and a half years ago. Uh, but we have neighbors that are monopolizing the parking, you know, one, one house is monopolizing like more than half the block, three quarters of a block because there are so many cars, but also because they refuse to use their driveway and refuse to park in front of their own street. And this is affecting several neighbors, not just myself. And it's happening, um, not only on my street, but in several other streets, neighbors I've spoken to where this is a real issue. Um, and when we ask some of these renters, if, you know, when furniture is being delivered, or there's some repair being happening in the home, if they would be so kind to just for that day move their cars and they refuse. So they have, um, it's kind of like the mafia. Sorry to make that comparison, but they won't let go of their parking and they'll park another car. If they move one car, they'll park another one of their cars so that nobody can take those spots. It's a very, um, I'm describing this very, very broadly right now. I don't want to get into so many of the nitty gritty and specific examples, but this is really affecting our neighborhoods. Um, the other issue I really wanted to bring up is that, and, and I know there's a bit of a solution here, but there's a lot of garbage that's being put out by the renters. They have four to five uh makeshift bins of garbage. A lot of times the garbage is just in bags that are not even closed, and it's attracting rodents and all types of animals. Um, sometimes you wake up in the morning and there's garbage spilled all over the street. Um, so I wanted to ask when that new garbage company is going to come in, who's going to provide um, a trash can for every family? Because so many people here, and it's been incomprehensible, but they don't even use trash cans. They just put out garbage loosely outside, and there's no regulation, there's no control. Um, and it's dangerous because the other day I saw skunks around the garbage. And you know, they carry rabies, and this was plain day, skunk surrounding the garbage, so. Um, so that's become a problem. These situations have existed for about, uh, I would say almost two years and have remained silent, just hoping and praying that things would get better. But they're not. They're actually getting worse. So it's time for me to be part of the solution and, you know, try to do something about it and re- raise these issues, especially to this board of people and Aldermen that care about our communities. Um, I, I really care about our community. I can, can tell you that. And again, I, I know I'm raising concerns and complaints, but I do want to be part of the solution. You know, I want to know what I can do to help and be, um, somebody that will move the needle in a positive direction, you know?
Thank you, and thank you for addressing all of that. And, uh,
Um.
Go ahead.
Can I say something? Um, I, I was aware of the parking I, and I, I talked to, to the chief. And if the car is on the street, that's a public park, and no one has a right for any parking space. So I've heard from several neighbors around there, and as you have a driveway to park your car and, and the other one has, uh, have a driveway to park their car in. You don't, but it's a public street, and I have talked to the chief, and there's nothing they can do about that.
Hmm. Well, I, I kind of refuse to give up because the situation is so bad. And let me say, it's become adversarial because they refuse to move the car for any reason, so nobody can own the street, but there's people behaving as if they own the street, and they've taken over. And, you know, I am somebody who pays taxes to Ansonia. I own my house.
That's right.
And the renters don't even pay taxes, and yet they're controlling us. And so, I mean, I, I hear you, Alderman Rivers. I do. I know this is, uh, you know, a complicated situation, but I, I feel that something can be done. Uh, maybe some legislation can be put forth. Um, let me say one last exam, one example that's very, very important here. We almost had a death because of this in my neighborhood. A woman, older woman fractured her skull. She fell off the stairs of her basement. And the ambulance could not even find a spot in front of her house to park, to pick her up. It was, it took several minutes to pick her up because they couldn't even park because of the abuse in front of her house. So this is very serious. This is, has escalated to levels that, you know, not just doing nothing is, is to me somewhat unacceptable.
Well, well, legally, okay, uh, the chief is on, uh, he can speak to this also. There's nothing that we can do about that because it's a public street.
Yeah, I think this intersects, this is your city attorney. Um, this intersects with a couple of different, uh, laws and departments we have in the city, um, to facilitate exactly what you're talking about, orderly, safe neighborhoods. So I think what we need to do is arrange a conversation, maybe even this week, Maria. Um, I'm going to have them give you my contact information, and we're going to have a discussion with our land use department. And land use department is an umbrella that covers blight, zoning enforcement, and other regulations that govern the streets. Um, and we may also draw our police chief in into the conversation as well. I think the issue is it's not one thing. It seems to be, you know, a couple of different intersecting issues, some of which are definitely, you know, we do have laws on point, for example, blight. Others, we may have to be a little more creative to address, like the parking, but we certainly are no stranger to mediating issues in neighborhoods uh similar to this, where there's a disruption of, of the order and the peace to the neighborhood. So, uh, Maria, let's, um, let's just make a plan. If you could, um, we, we don't have your information. Um, what we can do is you can reach out to the mayor's office tomorrow, and we will set something up. We can set up a remote or in-person meeting uh to talk about some of these issues, and we could help you.
Thank you, and I'm happy to come in person, sir. Very happy to discuss it because I have ideas too as to how we could remedy this. You know, and of course, using every, you know, every bit of diplomacy and also whatever any zoning allows, you know, if we can be a little bit creative, at least have a
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great attitude to have. I think the, uh, the diplomatic attitude towards these things goes a long way. And we've seen a lot of success with getting neighbors to realize, okay, they need to work together. So, um, I don't want to have you give your personal information out here, so I would say, do you have the contact information from Mayor Cassetti's office?
Yes, I will call this
If you could just give a call, ask to talk to Christina, and she'll take your information, and maybe we can set up an in-person meeting as early as next week, um, or a call as early as later this week.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Marini. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time being here.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's kind of nice to get involved and get to know all of you. Yeah.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board tonight? Please make yourself known. Waggle your hands. And third and final call, anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public session and move on to public official session with Mayor Cassetti. Is muted? Mayor, you're muted.
Josh, just to let you know, uh, I'm sorry, President Stewart.
Did you hear me?
Yeah, we were all having a hard time getting muted.
Okay. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Mayor.
Good evening, President Schuer, members of the Board of Aldermen residents in the great city of Ansonia. Tonight, I want to draw your attention to two important issues. The first is the new radios for our fire department. These are long awaited essential equipment, which will help our great volunteers communicate with other fire, public safety, and state agencies across the board. I am pleased that this board and our residents are moving this forward, and I am proud to bring this forward for your approval. Jared will talk more about this. The second item I draw your attention to is the transition plan for the WPCA to Aquarian. This is an important plan that will help ensure a seamless transition and also ensure that our residents are informed and understand the process. Please mark your calendars for Rock the Valley on August twenty-fourth for a spectacular live show featuring the Queen cover band Extreme Queen and many others. Also spectacular fireworks display at nine fifteen. Please also remember to mark your calendar for the farmer's market every Friday in Veterans Park from ten AM to one PM. I am excited to announce that fresh breads will be added item to our list of vendors. Finally, finally, please stay hydrated and cool as we experience poor air quality. And remember to keep your pets hydrated and cool. Champ and Sophie, get in the house. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, Corporation Council, John Marini. Looks like he's on the run.
All right, Mr. President, Dr. Schuer. First and foremost, if you're muted and having trouble getting unmuted, just raise your digital hand or use the chat. Um, I think it's some consequence of having, uh, muted all, all participants upon entry. Um, so I've asked everybody to unmute. You need to unmute yourself. If there's still an issue, let me know, and don't mute yourself once you've unmuted for some reason. Uh, it, it's not allowing you to do that. Um, first update of the night, I'm here at Colony Park. There's the water. There's the field. Our first big update is that the field is being prepped to go back online after some time under rehabilitation, uh, this fall. So we're expecting to have soccer back on the field in the fall. This has been a great work spearheaded by VHB with assistance by Burns Construction. So we're very happy to see this project on track. Um, Sheila has some technical information about it, i- if you'd like it. But, uh, the big thing is it looks like we're going to have, uh, sports back on the field this fall, and that's going to go a long way to relieving a lot of the stress on our other fields. As you know, all the activity that was once weekly, uh, every week and, and weekend going on here at Colony has now been transitioned to the nature center, putting a lot of, uh, bird, a lot of burden on the nature center field. So we're looking to resolve that this fall. Uh, secondly, to echo the mayor, there's a transition plan on the agenda for you tonight. Uh, WPCA and our sewer, uh, plant being transitioned to Aquarian as approved by this board. It's important to note that there are no action items on the agenda for you tonight. It's simply a heads up, a look forward. You could see it as a punch list of the items that have been accomplished and that will still need to be accomplished by this board. Uh, third, I don't want to forget, a, a big thanks, a big appreciation and recognition to Mr. Robert, and I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Obuchan. Mr. Robert Obuchan passed away, uh, several years ago. Uh, he was resident of Ansonia, where he really adored the Ansonia Library. And he moved to Florida, and it just so happens that in his will, he, uh, made sure to leave the proceeds of his home sale to the Ansonia Library. And so, uh, we were contacted sort of out of the blue by real estate agents of Florida, um, that, uh, the house was, uh, was going to be for sale, and that's part of execution of his will, and last will and testament, uh, that the proceeds were to be transitioned to Ansonia. So the city has received about a week and a half ago by wire over two hundred thousand dollars in donated money from Mr. Robert Obuchan to the Ansonia Library. And, uh, the board's going to be, uh, given an update on that pretty soon, and it looks like that, that fund, uh, could be used for capital improvements, very needed capital improvements in the library, the community room, and elsewhere. And we're going to be working to put some sort of recognition, some public recognition, to be in the library, uh, so, uh, Robert's, uh, donation will be remembered. But big thanks to him. Um, I don't know if there's any of his family still left in the city. Um, but if there are, we'd love to get in touch with them if you know. Um, I hear the Aldermen saying they're muted again. I'm going to once again go through and ask everyone to unmute. Don't mute yourself, please. You'll get stuck. Um, I want to give an update on the Opera House. We have designs, the first three dimensional designs of a rehabilitated Opera House ready for review. We're going to be scheduling a special event to make them available to this board and to the public. Uh, we also have, um, the bid results coming to a close on the next phase, which is the actual nitty gritty cost out of what it will take to bring the Opera House inside and out, back to, uh, back to a renovated state. And the great news is the state has taken a big liking to this project, SHIPO, which is the agency of the state responsible for historic remediation, really loves this project and loves the idea of this essentially being the, uh, the mitigation or the give and take for the demolition of the buildings at Ansonia Copper and Brass. Um, so that's a wonderful thing to know. This project now has a real fire to it. And we're going to be showing some of the first images of what we're looking to do, um, upon completion with this project. Uh, speaking of Ansonia Copper and Brass, I think it's already kind of been out there. The city is now the owner of both halves of Ansonia Copper and Brass. Um, and this allows us, of course, to move forward with realizing the funds. Um, and of course, those funds are in place because full circle, you authorized the, uh, the foreclosure of this property. Without your vote to move forward to take that big step to own this property over sixty acres, this would not be possible. Another smaller project adjacent, um, the demolition of, uh, of the old church on State Street, which I believe is right across from the Ansonia Armory, adjacent to the Eagle Hoes. Um, it's a property that has been condemned by Ansonia Building, is unsafe. Uh, we're putting a plan in place, uh, to go forward with a demolition. I've also reached out to our fire department and Chief Horjikson about the idea of allowing this be a, uh, a practice for our fire department. Um, a, basically a demo, a, a teardown that they could, uh, practice on, that they could train on prior to the demolition date. So we don't have a demolition date yet. We haven't ironed out all the details. Um, but before that happens, we're going to make every effort to see if we can make this property available for training to our fire department. Um, in addition to that, um, there's really nothing, uh, big to update you on right now, but I'll, I'll take any questions. I will say again, big thanks to Jeannie and our Ansonia Police Department. We had a horrendous animal abuse case, and the hearing on that for the city to take possession of the, uh, of the animals left alive, but, but severely abused is going to be on the eleventh. So I'm going to hope that, that we could report shortly after that, that the city has complete custody of those abused animals, and that hearing's going forth on July eleventh. And I see you, Chicago, you're muted. Hold on, you maybe have a question?
So I'm gonna see if I can unmute you while I'm giving this update. I'm on a cell, so it makes it a little let's say, Chicago.
Hey, Chicago, you should be able to unmute Alderman Rivers.
I know that you was trying to keep me quiet, but
Of course.
Um, I was just going to, uh, suggest that, um, being that the, um, library has got a big donation from him, um, is there some way that they're they could possibly think about naming a room after him or something?
That would be a really good idea. I, I think this is a great idea. This is a, this is a, a big, uh, donation and one that certainly, you know, he didn't have to make. That's a lot of equity in a home, you know, these days especially. That's big. So, you know, we're going to be talking with the board, and, you know, I hope they're going to have a fitting tribute. That would be an amazing idea.
John, just, uh, two related comments. I'm delighted to hear about the, um, uh, demolition of the, uh, of the church on State Street, and, uh, uh, when the demolition is complete, uh, will that be an open lot subject to to, um, you know, some type of future development proposal?
Well, ultimately, the board, your Board of Aldermen is going to have the say on how to use this property. And, uh, you know, from, coming from staff, you know, we've had thoughts about recommending a parking lot and other items. Sheila, I believe, uh, you know, can chime in with some thoughts, but I would say ultimately, no decision has yet been made, except that it certainly needs to come down. And of course, Alderman Adamowski, you got that big state street improvement project going on. We don't want to have to do that after the project because, you know, we don't have to mess up the street after, after it's all improved. So we want to get it done by the spring.
That's very good news. I, I don't think we need another parking lot, but I'm hopeful that that can serve as a uh, site of something that's beneficial and, and interesting and income producing to the city. Um, so, um, congratulations on, uh, on that. And just a comment on the library and, and the, that wonderful uh, kind, uh, civic donation. Um, I'm hoping that can be used to, uh, restore the clock and get the clock working again, and, uh, maybe, maybe the clock tower can be named after him, just, just as a
I'm unmuting everyone again and again. Just remember, if you're unmuted, don't go, don't go mute yourself.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, right before you made the announcement not to mute yourself, I muted myself and then
No, I did too.
For everyone, for everyone else. Raise your, you know, raise your hand, whatever, if, uh, if necessary. Kurt was, Kurt was muted as well and couldn't unmute himself.
That was intentional, though, so that's, that wasn't, that was totally not a mistake.
Oh, yeah. Definitely mute that guy.
Yeah.
Settle down, Chicago.
He's lucky we didn't kick him out. Oh, he can talk. Okay.
No more muting.
You unmuted me. That was your mistake.
I know, because I only get two questions. Oh, what? I forgot.
Any questions for Corporation Council tonight from the Aldermen? All right, John, don't go far because
I, I want to also give a shout out to, um, who's not here, Alderman, uh, Joe Yalman, uh, led an ordinance committee meeting uh, where we've been talking a lot about a new housing code for the city. Um, one that will go a long way to, uh, protecting, uh, tenants and renters. And so, um, I want to let the, the group know that we're still under the way, uh, with some fine tuning, some revisions. And there's going to be a need to talk about at, at least one or two other ordinances. So I'm imagining that we're going to have an ordinance meeting this month, and that you're probably going to see the first draft of this housing code, um, that we're very excited about by August.
All right, um, since he's on, let's go with, um, Budget Director Kurt Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a, a quick update tonight. Couple of things, obviously, year end has, has come and gone. Uh, we fared, feared quite, feared, fared, fared quite well. Um, Kim is in the process now of just organizing all the cleanup transfers. Uh, we expect to have that done at the August boat meeting. Uh, things are looking, uh, very positive, uh, much better than I had anticipated, which is, which is always a good thing on the expense side. Um, few areas that we've been talking about all along, utilities, uh, was a little higher than expected. Garbage was a little higher than expected, but we did have many areas that came in below, uh, which is good, so we'll be able to move money around and cover all that. Uh, waiting on final revenue numbers. Obviously, we have to look at the sixty day accruals and things like that uh, to finalize all those numbers. So again, a lot of positives, and we'll finalize all of that with boat at their August meeting. Uh, the twenty, fiscal year twenty-three audit, uh, is complete. Um, there were no findings of any concerns. Obviously, the only thing that they brought up obviously was the delay in getting the audit done, uh, but unfortunately, a lot of that was tied to, uh, some staffing issues. We had some people, again, unfortunately, out on sick leave and, and retirement and so on. We had some people, again, unfortunately, out on sick leave and and retirement and so on, that slowed the process down. Uh, but again, I think a lot of credit goes to uh the staff around the Board of Ed's side. And then our staff, particularly, uh, you know, Richie, Kim, uh Franny and Mary Ann for all the work and effort that they did over the last couple months uh to get all this closed out and done. But, you know, at the end of the day, a very positive uh result, no uh major underlying concerns that the auditors found. Uh, which is good. Our books are are in good order, uh in good form. So that's uh that's something that we could all definitely be proud of. And then the final piece, um, working on the final touches for uh the capital improvement plan. I know I talked about it um in the June meeting and also in the May meeting. Uh, we're delaying to roll it out until the August meeting, reason being is there were substantial changes in the rules for Locep. Uh, there is a meeting on August sixth uh that we need to attend to make sure that we fully understand the process. Essentially, the only way you can spend Locep now is to make sh- is by taking things that are on an approved capital improvement plan, and that plan needs to be improved by the chief legislative body, which is all of you. So uh I wanna make sure that all of that's uh have all that information correct. And then we'll present that for all of you to uh to plan out. So when the plan that you see um, the plan that you'll see will include uh not only the reoccurring stuff like work we need to do on trees, work we need to do on roads and sidewalks and drains and things like that. But I've also tried to map out as much of the referendum items as I can. Um, how they would work, how we plan to fit them in. Some will pay for in cash. Uh, others will use dead instruments, so whether it be private placements, bonding or uh some type of lease purchase. And then ultimately, uh, the big one that will be there is a decision on how we move forward with the school um and what the timeline of that will be. So again, you'll have all of that broken down in in August uh for you to look at, review and approve. So with that, Mr. President, I'll take any questions that anyone may have.
Oh, yes, you know, I was, you know, I I'm coming, okay? Um, um, Joe, I think that Joe DiBacco, um, I think that you need to get this guy um an Anthony An- Ansonia shirt to wear to the meeting.
I know that Seymour Wildcat is
Oh, sorry.
You see what he's wearing, Joe? I don't believe this guy.
I I gotta apologize. I didn't realize I had the shirt on and pay attention to it.
He knew he was wearing it.
Yes, he did. I know.
But Dr. Joe, I I would not hate an Ansonia Charger shirt. I'm just gonna put that out there.
I I I'll get you one. Deal.
I'm a Nike guy, not an Under Armour guy, so you know, you may have to change it up a little bit.
I'll work on it.
Any questions for uh Kurt tonight?
Uh, yes, Kurt, uh just a follow up on your audit comments. Um, I I saw the audit posted on the state website, ct.gov. Um, on the same web website, there's a reference to um a statute that requires each governing body, such as the Board of Aldermen, to have an audit committee uh that is supposed to meet um independently with the auditors to review uh the audit findings. I'm just wondering uh how that applies to us. This may be a question for Josh uh as as well. Uh, do we have an audit committee?
We do not, is my answer. Um It's, I mean, from my, and Richie's on, Richie obviously can speak a lot more um historical perspective than I can. But I believe it's something that would is generally reviewed with Boat. So the auditors will um schedule some uh time and come in and discuss it with Boat.
Okay, so I'm assuming then that Boat could serve as the audit committee for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the statute.
Uh, that that is my understanding, but again, I I refer to Richie for historical and John for the actual law.
All right, just just checking to see who's gonna sit down with them and review and review the audit.
Yep. Oh, yeah, that's definitely done. Yep.
But but again, for any Alderman that wants to see it, it's right on the um um ct.gov along with every other town and municipalities uh audit.
Yeah, we can make electronic copies available if anyone um wants them. And then obviously, hard copies are are produced and and delivered, but I'm not sure anybody wants a hard copy.
Very, very easy to access on
Yep. Yep.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, we'll move on to assuming he's un- unmuted. Police Chief Wayne Williams.
Can you hear me, uh, President?
Yep. Welcome.
Ah, thank you, uh President Shure, Board of Aldermen. Good evening. Um, I I'll give you a quick personnel update. And then I uh I will uh kind of go over some incidents. I know that there's gonna be questions on. So uh we have two people that are uh two recruits that are in the academy right now. We have one officer that's in field training. We have six open police officer positions. Um, currently, our DUI and speed enforcement grant patrols are now underway. We are working um on several large capital purchases with the finance department. These were part of the referendum, but uh we may have, as as Mr. Miller said, there may be other ways to uh to take care of these instead of pulling them out of the referendum. So we'll be talking very soon. Um, July first, the uh Police Department switched to an outdoor outside vendor. They're called uh extra duty solutions. They're now handling uh the majority of our scheduling and billing for extra duty, or as you see them, road jobs, private duty jobs. Um, all the officers have been trained on the new system. And uh this two week period will be the first time that we do the billing through this system. Um, so we're gonna work with the finance department to make sure that it's done seamlessly. Uh, training, we're we're working on tier two of our accreditation. Uh, we have also been notified of some changes on this by state statute of some things that we need to do uh through post, which is the training academy. So uh that had to do with part of accreditation. They made some some changes, so we have to uh modify some of our stuff. Um, we had the uh armed armed robbery on June twenty-ninth at the Smoke Shop on Persian Drive uh that is still uh on uh under investigation. And uh as you may have seen on the news this morning, uh, there was a explosive device found at the Public Works Department. When I say that on the property, it was in the grass area. It was not next to any of the buildings. Um, unfortunately, investigation required us to shut down the facility until the situation be remedied with the assistance of the Connecticut State Police uh Bomb Squad and the FBI. The device was detonated uh where it was and the facility has reopened. Oh, they'll be open back tomorrow morning. We're also working on preparations for Rock the Valley. I know the mayor mentioned it uh on August twenty-fourth, so we're working on prepping for that. Uh, we also work with Seymour to do assist us with uh crowd control and traffic control. Uh, if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Any questions for the chief tonight from the Alderman?
Uh, yes, sir. Excuse me. Where was the robbery again?
All right, this is yeah, thi- this is not uh
Public session.
This is, yeah. Yeah, once, once we have the bug session, then this is just for the Alderman.
Oh, got it. Sorry.
Oh, he heard it, so he can, he can address it.
That's okay. It was on June twenty-ninth at the Smoke Shop. It's located on Persian Drive near uh Bridge Street. So just to answer the question.
Thank you. Who else?
Well, I got off easy tonight with the question.
Another one, Joe Cassetti.
Well, hi, Chief.
How are you, sir?
All right, through you, Josh. Um, this explosive device, was it on the inside or the outside of the fence?
It was on the inside of the fence. Well, it was on the inside of the fence. It would be on the facility itself. So if you are familiar with the Public Works uh Department, when you go down the uh into Public Works, you drive down the road, boards like the sewer plants in the back.
Yeah.
Fence that runs along the right side, then there's the hill that goes up to the walkway.
Okay.
That area um where you first take the left to go uh to the Public Works uh Department.
Thank you for taking care of that. That's, thank you.
Yeah, no, it was uh one of the employees down there found it, reported it immediately. And uh and between us, the Fire Marshal and
Alex, come on.
He can't mute himself, but
Well, he he just muted himself, so he's gone forever now.
Oh, no.
Uh, and lastly, just so you know, and I know Jared's gonna speak at this uh at at that length. Um, but he obviously has the Police Department on uh the work that he's done on this uh radio communication system.
Thank you. All right, um.
Josh, excuse me, it's Beth. I wasn't able to unmute myself before. But I do need a, the hard copy of the audit filed with the Town Clerk's Office, and I have to publish a legal notice for it, so if Kurt could make arrangements for that.
Yeah, uh, I expect John will be dropping them off at some point this week.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, let's uh wrap up with uh Superintendent of Schools, Dr. uh DiBacco.
Good evening, Alderman Shure. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I hope you're enjoying this wonderfully oppressively hot weather. I do wanna let you know, our summer school program uh will be coming to a close this Thursday. We still have our um extended school year program for students that have special needs that will run through the end of the summer. Um, I did wanna share that um we had a teacher from our high school that was selected to go to China for two weeks to teach STEM education and teach in China, which is a great honor for one of our teachers. And um we've also wanted to share that just got noticed today that we will we have been selected to be a Commissioners Network for our Prendergast Elementary School. We're gonna be in the planning stage uh for for being a Commissioners Network uh school district, which would come with some extra funding. It's a, it's a grant that would start, it's a three year grant. It starts at like six hundred thousand the first year, four hundred thousand the next year, two hundred thousand in the third year. But it's something that we're trying to work to get the Commissioners Network Grant and some SIG Grants, which are school improvement grants as well. So uh that that is happening. Um, I did work with Colliers to finish our application for uh the middle school. Um, however, because of our special legislation, they had to open up a new portal. So I'll have to do the application all over again, which I'm very excited about. But I will submit our application. There's actually two of them that have to be done, one for the middle school and for Central Office. So there's two applications, which I will do again with the help of an outside uh consultant, Colliers, which has uh gone through the process many times because it's something that we don't want to uh mess up. We wanna get it right. So uh I'm working with the gentleman Chuck uh Warrington, and uh hopefully we'll get that done. And that's what we have going on this summer, and uh I'm here to answer any questions and if I could help in any way.
Any questions for the superintendent tonight from the Alderman?
No, just help Kirk out.
You you better believe, I I almost ordered the Nike shirt right while we were talking. I was gonna get it from Amazon.
You should get him the Nike shirt, just because he wore that.
I I'm gonna have it embroidered with our our own kit. You can do it. We'll get it all done. I I can't see that Wildcat stuff here.
I know.
If I can get that in a slim size, please.
I get it in a medium. You
That's right, a medium. There you go.
Any question for the superintendent? All right, thank you. And that so ends the um public official session. We'll move on to financial reports, uh Finance Committee.
Hey, hey, Josh, it's Tony. Can I make a motion to uh pay all bills if deemed correct?
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers to pay all bills. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? My motion carries unanimously. Uh, secondly, was the boat recommendations and the municipal report. There's no um, so you say no municipal report. Um, because Boat didn't meet in July, so we'll skip that. Uh, request for refunds, um and that's in your packet, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-three cents if found to be correct.
Motion.
Motion by Rivers, second by all in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Carries? Uh, monthly reports, just to, oh, as always, um, motion to, I want you to accept everything else that was in your packet. It's not on the agenda and and a thank you to all those departments that uh faithfully do send us those reports, which um I know we enjoy reading and they provide us
Yeah. Motion to accept, and thank you for all the hard work that they do every month on them reports. They really look good.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon, all in favor? Any opposed uh, any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, let's see, we have nothing under accidents and claims. We have uh two communications, one's the late communication, which we'll get to in a second. And the first one is actually from me. Um, that is a letter uh from the Fire Commission. Um, and it's a motion to um support the uh vote for Manfred V- Vivas uh to be appointed to the Ansonia um uh Fire Police, which is volunteer. Um, I'm just looking to pass that on. It's better, it's already went through his uh firehouse and through the Fire Commission unanimously, both. And actually
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Josh, just ju- ju- just a question. Do we, do we vote on every uh volunteer joining a um uh a a local uh department?
Well, we vote on that. We've always voted on those, and sometimes there are stipends involved um and and other things and and distribution of equipment and stuff, so there is, it's not just someone who is you know, I don't know, I can't give it a good example, but you're getting issued equipment and whatnot, so there's some
Okay, so 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 the answer is we we do and we should. This is not an exception.
Yeah, we we've always done that. And so it always goes through those channels and then it it still has to come to us.
Thank you. I uh I apologize for interrupting you, though.
Yeah, no worries. And I think, Janetti, are you muted?
No. Oh, yes.
Janetti, Janetti is muted and Alex has his hand up and he is muted as well. I don't know if John can can address that.
Thank you. Joe's, Joe is all set.
Right, and uh Alex?
Uh, first off, I'm staying at the firehouse, so that that noise was actually a vehicle at the stop sign. But um anyways, just to clarify, the fire police are voted upon because they're uh appointed by the Town Clerk. So normal volunteer firefighters that join firehouses are voted upon at the membership level at the each individual firehouse. However, fire police are appointed by Town Clerk, so they have to be uh voted upon by the Board of Aldermen. Just to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. And what is the distinction between a fire police and a member joining a firehouse?
Um, he's muted himself again.
Okay, that's okay. Let's 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 just uh a point on them. At some point, I would just like to understand the the
Oh, there he is.
Sorry, there's a motorcycle driving by. Um, they have different functions in a firefighter. Firefighters will put out the fire, where fire police have track control. They work in conjunction with the Police Department, so that's why they have to be appointed by the Town Clerk.
Got it. Thanks for, thanks for your great explanation.
I believe they have to be sworn in as well, don't they, by the mayor?
I'm sorry.
Uh, Alex?
There is, there is a swearing process. That is correct. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Um, all right, so next up, we have uh Communication Two. This is, this was mentioned by the mayor and I believe John uh Marini as well. This is the letter from uh Emergency Management Director Jared Heon regarding the public safety communication upgrade, four plus years in the making. Um,
Yeah, I make a motion. I've I've gone through it. I'm sure all the other Aldermen has uh gone through it. I don't have any
You could talk.
Questions on it because I know exactly what he's talking about, cuz I've heard this for four years.
Our motion by Rivers, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by not, is there any discussion or questions?
Yeah, let's hear what Jared has to say.
Sure.
And 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 Anthony too. I wanna hear what Anthony has to say.
I can't hear you, Jared.
Jared, you're muted?
No.
He doesn't appear to be muted, but we can't hear him.
Maybe you gotta turn up his volume?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, perfect.
All right. All right, uh, good evening, uh, all members of the Board of Aldermen and uh public officials and the public that's on tonight. Thanks for having us. We're uh currently streaming to you from Company Five. We're at a training, so we kind of broke out to come down for this part of the meeting. Um, just wanted to uh basically give a quick overview. We started uh back in, I would say, twenty thirteen, kind of putting together our various systems. Um, you know, through all the the different public safety departments that utilize radios. Uh, we came to the conclusion that when we were doing it separately, we were using different vendors, things weren't compatible. Uh, things of that nature, so we put Uh, things of that nature. So we put it all together. And through the years, we've worked at kind of uh upgrading things that, you know, really required to be done uh up right up front. And we've gotten to a point over the last couple of years, we really haven't done very many upgrades, with the exception of. Uh, getting ourselves prepared to move from two Elm Street to sixty five Main. And uh with this upgrade, uh basically all the departments uh kind of a late add on uh Public Works. Uh, all the departments, including Public Works, uh get addressed. So currently, we're operating on uh basically an analog system. Uh, that was put in in the early two thousands. That's where most of the portables and mobile radios are from. Uh, and what we need to do is convert ourselves over to a more up to date, reliable system. Uh, and leverage the technology with uh what they call Project Twenty Five, P twenty five. Standards, uh, and that's for digital communications. It's called P twenty five because uh it's not specific to one vendor. It's specific across the board. So if you think of like. An iPhone or an Android, this is a standard that all radios need to meet. Uh, to be able to communicate with other public safety departments. Uh, and with our fire and EMS being dispatched by Northwest Public Safety. Uh, it threw a little wrench uh into the uh equation. So uh basically what we did was work with the state of Connecticut with the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network. So we'll be, even though we'll have our own frequencies local to Ansonia and have really good coverage in Ansonia. We're gonna leverage the state's backbone uh to basically run the background of our network on and connect up to Northwest Public Safety, which will also. Allow other towns that are on the state network to connect with us. Uh, so I apologize that this was late to you. Uh, we worked really hard uh with those things that got thrown in in the last basically month, month and a half. To get the pricing uh in. This is a do not exceed amount. We will do our best leveraging any additional discount. We've already gotten ten percent over the state. Contract discount um from Motorola. Uh, so we did have some significant savings there, and any way that we can. Uh, trim this back to not use the entire budget, uh we fully intend on doing that. Uh, but this, you know, I did put in a a good amount of equipment uh listed on there. There's obviously some more. I tried to make it so you can understand. Um, you know, what we're looking to do. Probably the biggest pull in this whole uh project is the Fire Department is completely replacing. Every piece of equipment that they have for their radio system, uh because it was so outdated and so far behind. Uh, so it is very much needed. There is some lead time. Once we get these ordered. Uh, we're already working with uh Kurt Miller uh to figure out the schedule of that and um. Just really appreciate everyone's support, and even though the communication was late to you. Uh, please know that this has been uh quite the arduous and long process to get it to that point.
Thank you. With that, are any any uh questions or comments from the Alderman?
I I just I just have a comment, Josh. Um, just wanted to um. Say thank you for um. Uh, all your your work on this, uh in addition to your your regular duties. This was a uh. Very big and important undertaking. And um um also delighted going to the state system. And um second, you know, secondly, uh I thought you provided us. With a uh an excellent written report that outlined. Process as well as the recommendations and the rationale for them. Uh, makes it very easy, I think, for uh for us to support this.
Thank you.
Also, Steve.
Alderman Stewart, if I could just add one comment. Uh, Jared has done extensive work on this and uh. Thank you for your support from all their Aldermen. This is a long process and uh like he had mentioned that. The Fire Department's last upgrade was in two thousand and three. With a ten year plan, this should be our third upgrade, and this is only our first in twenty one years. So uh, this is a well overdue and I'd like to uh thank everybody for their support.
Thanks, Chief. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion in a second. Uh, I'd like to take a vote. All in favor of uh moving this project forward? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Go to it, Jared.
Wait, um, wait, uh. Through you, President Stewart. Um. Yeah, it's good that you guys voted to go for it. It's a fantastic project, but again, we have to make sure all the money is in place. Uh, Jared did give me an update on the cost structure of how it would work and when we need payments. Um, so we just need to make sure we have all of the cash in place. Um, in my discussions with Jared, we'll need about twenty five percent upfront. Uh, to put the order in, that's roughly five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, so it's great that you've given the authorization for the mayor to sign off on things. Um, I'll work with Jared uh on a timeline. Uh, to make sure that we have the money in place, because then each each thing has a follow up. You know, then there's a sixty percent payment that's due, and then a ten percent, and then another five percent. So I just don't want to jump the gun and not have the cash in hand and slow the project down, so.
Thank you, Kurt.
Well.
All right. Good job by everyone. Thank you to the Alderman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, uh, we have nothing under resignations. We have no resolutions this month. Uh, we have a letter from the mayor uh for appointments dated July third. There are two proposed appointments. Uh, read those. Uh, one is the Board of Public Works, two year term. Um, nominee Scott Foster, unaffiliated of Seven Upland Terrace. This is a replacement. The term would expire twelve thirty one twenty twenty four.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Janetti, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our motion carries unanimously. And the last appointment is. Uh, Commission for Elderly Services, three year term. This is um, the nominee is Susan Rano, Democrat of ninety three Ben Street, and this is to be an alternate to regular member. Term to expire twelve thirty one twenty twenty six.
Motion.
Motion by Cassetti and a second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously again. Uh, ordinances, there's nothing this month, but uh it looks like we'll have a busy um next meeting. A lot of ordinances coming our way. Um, and and the next, uh, we have new business. Uh, mentioned by several um of this uh city leaders, transition to for the W P C A. John Marini on.
No action needed, just it's uh for information. It's basically a roadmap.
Okay.
On it's. Excuse me, uh. Mister President, um, I just want to um. I'll bring this up, um. I'm trying to get the Little League paid. For the uh. The clay that they had to.
On the clay, yeah, Alderman Rivers, we're on that. We we we, I fully back um that decision. It's my legal opinion that they should not be responsible for that. So, yes, we're gonna get that reimbursed. We were just talking about that like two days ago, so that should be in process. We should have that resolved. And let's touch base if it's not by Monday. So let's um, let's keep track of that because they shouldn't be out of pocket anymore for that.
Yeah, my good reminder, Chicago, and I I did bring in the bill and uh all the documentation and uh and. Delivered that to the City Hall yesterday, so we should be in motion on that. Uh, all right, last item uh in regular session is under old business. Um, bid proposals for the use of city property. Forty eight Silver Hill Road, we discussed this last one. On do you have uh update on this?
I believe one is still coming in, so uh one is on file, the other one's coming in, so I I believe we'll have both of them to you within within the next two weeks.
All right. All right, so that ends the regular session. We have two items under uh executive session. Do we have a motion to move to executive session?
Motion to move to executive session.
Motion by Rivers, second by Cassetti, all in favor? Right, let's go.
Let's not lose our. Let's not lose our voices either.
Two items for recording. Motion to return to regular session by. Second by not, all in favor? All right, uh, in the order of executive session, we had two items, uh both under Blake litigation, one A. Uh, eight Myrtle Ave. What's our, what's your pleasure?
Uh, motion to uh. Reduce the penalty as discussed. I don't want to mention any any dollar amount at this point, but. As we discussed it and let John take it from there.
Okay, mo- uh, motion by Cassetti and the second by Rivers, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. All right, motion carries, and on the order of one B, ten Smith Street.
Uh, motion that we uh proceed as discussed. Uh, we're gonna refer it to the uh Building Department to work out the completed uh. Uh, work that needs to be done and to come back to us when it's ready.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers, all in favor? Opposed or abstaining? Okay, motion carries unanimously and hit it, Rivers.
To adjourn.
Rivers and anybody?
Come on, Tony, that's it, Tony. We got him on record.
Thank you, guys.
We're gonna mute everybody till the next meeting.
All right, have a good one, guys.
Good night.